Please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mary Ann, we can begin with our roll call.
Ms. Thompson?
President.
Ms. Segal Morris?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Finer?
President.
Mr. McCann?
Here.
Mr. Curtin?
President.
Mr. Brea?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're also joined tonight by Mayor Harden. Uh, before we continue, I'm just going to note a quick change to our agenda. We are going to be striking items eight and nine, uh, which are our, um, engineers reports. Uh, for 2021, we're making a shift that we're just going to be engineering reports on a monthly basis rather than at each council meeting. Um, of course, in cases where we have ongoing projects or need action from council, we'll make an exception to that. Um, but just for those regular updates, especially now where projects are sort of been a holding pattern, we're going to forego those reports. Moving on, our first item is community announcements. Uh, so if any member of council has an item they would like to share, now is the time. Just go ahead and mute yourself.
Well, I am happy to report that we launched our, um, adopt a wreath program that I had talked about at our last meeting. We posted it on Facebook, uh, six or seven hours ago and have already received twenty responses, uh, adopting forty wreaths. So it's going really well so far. Um, but if anybody else on the call is interested in adopting a wreath, um, you can email the borough office and we will provide you with details. Um, there have been some concerns about uniform, uniformity of the wreath, so we are, um, creating guidelines to address some of those. Um, so we hope it's a really smooth and successful program. So thanks to all for considering, uh, participating.
Thank you, Caroline. Uh, any other members of council of night on they'd like to share tonight? All right, hearing none. Um, before we move to public comment, I'm noticing that we have a good amount of our police department with us here tonight, which is for, um, an item that we have later on the agenda under Chief Kelly's report. So I think in the interest of time, maybe Chief Kelly, if you want to move to that agenda item now, uh, we can dispense with that so everyone could be on with their night.
All right, thank you, sir. Um, I'll hold off on statistics until we get this out of the way and we'll come back to those, if that's okay, sir.
Yep, sounds good.
Okay, then I'll go to my second item, which is the recommendation of promotion for police officer first class Adam Clark to corporal. Police supervision has never been more important, especially in light of emerging technologies, expanded public expectations, record level accountability, increased liability, and newer officers entering the profession who present with different levels of experience and expectancy. According to publications and experience, first line supervisors are critical in any police agency, supervising the overwhelming majority of the personnel. First line supervisors often bridge the, between officers and management and direct and report on organizational threats looming, often undetected. First line supervisors deliver, instruct, and ensure accountability of department policy. Through formal and informal means, they can personally affect the likelihood of a policy being followed. First line supervisors train, coach, and mentor all new police officers. In the Yardley Borough Police Department, these skill sets are critical to our mission as we are an agency which employs both full and part-time police officers and our excellent recruiting frequently results in turnover of our part-time staff. First line supervisors manage critical incidents and complex criminal investigations. The decision made and the direction offered by first line supervisors early in an incident or early in investigation have often directly impacted the outcome of a critical event. Yardley Borough Police Officers are the most readily identifiable and readily contacted of all borough employees, officials, or staff. It is the responsibility of our first line supervisors to ensure that our organizational culture, set in place by management, and the core values we uniformly adopted are internalized and operationalized by our officers. On April seventh, two thousand twenty, Yardley Borough Council approved the department reorganization, which referred the position of corporal to the Yardley Borough Civil Service Commission. The Yardley Borough Civil Service Commission revised and the Borough Council later adopted Yardley Borough Civil Service Rules to include the position of police corporal. The position was advertised within the Borough Police Department and one qualified member submitted an application. That officer, police officer first class Adam S. Clark, successfully passed a written examination provided by the Pennsylvania State Chiefs of Police Association for first line supervisors. He also received satisfactory scores on his performance evaluations, a recommendation by my office, and he passed the oral examination as recently administered by the Yardley Borough Civil Service Commission. This promotion was also captured in the two thousand twenty-one Yardley Borough budget. Before I ask for, respectfully ask for your motion, I want to tell you a bit, little bit about our candidate, Adam Clark. The person being considered tonight is a celebrity. He made cameo appearances on Who Wants to be a Millionaire and most recently on Jeopardy, which makes us very proud. He holds an associate's degree from the Montgomery County Community College and also received his Police Act one twenty from that same institution. He joined the Yardley Borough Police Department in March of two thousand fourteen and was promoted to police officer first class in March of two thousand sixteen. Adam serves as our critical incident managing team coordinator. He serves as a field training officer and he also serves as the intelligent liaison officer to both the Pennsylvania State Criminal Intelligence Center and the Delaware Valley Criminal Intelligence Center. Adam has earned two unit citation awards over the past couple of years and has multiple letters of accommodation. With that being said, sir, I respectfully suggest the council consider a motion to promote police officer first class Adam Clark to corporal effective January fifth, two thousand twenty.
All right, let's make it official. Do we hear a motion for the promotion of Officer Adam Clark?
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilwoman Segal Morris, seconded by Councilwoman Thompson. Is there any discussion or comments from council? Or discussion or comments from the public?
There's a hand up, I think. Oh, yes.
Uh, yes, Dr. Promater, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I brought this up at the last meeting in regard to the process in terms of our civil service commission. Um, was this, I assume that there had to be a vote on the civil service commission to promote Officer Clark. Um, was that advertised? Was there, you know, are these meetings public and advertised because there was no notice of it?
I can defer to Chief on some of the details, um, as to what the exact process is. Um, but I know that, you know, the meetings, we follow all the regulations we need to, and in fact, you know, some of the past concerns you've expressed, we did run by the solicitor for the civil service commission, um, who is separate from the solicitor for the borough and the council. Um, so the, yes, the requirements there have been met.
Uh, I mean, my main concern is that, um, Brian Welch, who's a, an auxiliary police officer with the Yardley Borough Police Department, if he voted on this, it's a conflict of interest to have an officer in the same department vote on a promotion of a fellow officer. Um, again, I'm just, you know, I've been looking at a lot of the civil service commission regulations since I've applied and, um, it, I, I really was just curious as to this process.
Thank you. We, um, as I mentioned, we did address that concern with, uh, the solicitor for the civil service commission and he is satisfied that there is not a conflict in place with our current arrangement.
So Brian Welch did vote on this?
Dr. Prom, I believe the question is asked and answered, so we're going to move on. Um, do we have further discussion from council of the public? All right, hearing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor of this promotion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Let the record reflect that the motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Adam. Um, I think the mayor is going to take it away here with the oath of, similar to what we would do if we were in person with the oath of office and Adam's, uh, wife and young daughter will assist us with these, uh, swearing in.
So thank you, Chief, and thank you, Cas, uh, Council President Brea. So a couple of things. As the council president mentioned, one of the things that always warms my heart and I think makes our department stand out above all others is if you just take a look at the people on the Zoom meeting, uh, my quick count, I came up with maybe ten or more from our department. So I think that that support speaks volumes. Chief, you went through a long list of items. I think the one thing that I need to add to that, just for the record, and I may be wrong, but I think his badge number is forty-one thirty-three. Um, if that is correct, that could be added to the record. If it's incorrect, then you guys can, can fix the numbers when you come in. Um, but, uh, so a couple of things. Obviously, you know, uh, these, uh, the Yardley Borough Police Officers are our frontline heroes. There's no doubt about it. And Adam leads by example and he does a great job. Uh, he is a reflection of exactly what we love about our Yardley Borough Police Officers and top down from Chief Kelly to the other officers, uh, Sergeant Golden, um, Charlie, and now Adam, you know, we have great leadership that leads all of our officers through the process. So, uh, especially in times like these, we know that, uh, your job is a job that we all appreciate that you do and, and protect us as borough citizens and keep us safe. So Adam, thank you for all you do and it's my honor to, to lead you through this oath tonight, okay? So, yeah, you got it. So am I, can you guys still hear me?
Okay.
All right, great. So Adam, please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
Uphold the laws and ordinances.
Uphold the laws and ordinances.
Of the borough of Yardley.
Of the borough of Yardley.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of a civil service police corporal.
Of a civil service police corporal.
Of the borough of Yardley.
Of the borough of Yardley.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
And to the best of my judgment and ability.
And to the best of my judgment and ability.
So Adam, I'd like to wish you congratulations and I'd also like to congratulate your family who's there with you because as we all know, the job you do is not an individual job. Um, we ask a lot of your family and so do you, so congratulations to everyone.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Uh, I would, should, should we, uh, do the, the pin?
Yeah, please, Adam. It was hard for me to see what you actually have on there, what type of hardware, so I was waiting to, waiting for you to.
Well, I still have my PFC Chevron. I'll, I'll take that off and Lily can do the honors just like she did when I was promoted to PFC.
Lily, come on up and, and help that out with this, will you?
Yeah, I'll try.
Sometimes at work he puts them on upside down, so if you can help us.
Putting up.
Nope.
Can't get.
No, I got it. I got it.
You got it?
Oh, I'm so good at this.
Don't poke yourself.
Oh, I did it.
All right, now it's official. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. I, I'd like to just say something if I could have the floor for him, for a moment.
Absolutely.
Uh, in our department meeting just earlier this evening, uh, Chief Kelly mentioned that today marks six years of him being the chief of the department. Uh, and in those six years, uh, I think the department has really grown in, in leaps and bounds and I think we owe that to the, the leadership of, of Chief Kelly and Sergeant Golden. And, um, I, I, I love the town of Yardley. There's nowhere I would rather serve. Uh, I feel like they don't really make towns like this anymore. Um, so, and I think that the department is a, a really great group of officers and I look forward to, uh, serving with them for years to come. Thank you, Adam. Thank you.
All right, uh, before we move on to the rest of the meeting, um, actually, I see Sergeant Golden raised your hand, so go ahead.
How you doing, sir? Thank you. Uh, I just would like to say real fast, Adam, uh, congratulations, very, very well earned and deserved. Um, it's been amazing watching you grow into the leader you've become to today. Uh, I probably couldn't have slept, maybe I was more excited than you this past week, uh, waiting for this day, so very proud of you and thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, Sergeant. Appreciate it.
All right, uh, before we move on, I just wanted to let everyone know that if you joined for this swearing in, we will not be offended if you depart now. So please take the opportunity to do so. Uh, there is no obligation to sit through the rest.
Thank, thank you, everyone.
I am.
Appreciate it.
Okay, back to our normal agenda. Uh, we will open up the public comment portion of meeting. This is the portion of the meeting in which members of the public may address counsel regarding items that do not appear on the agenda. If you wish to address counsel regarding an item that does appear on the agenda, you will be given an opportunity to do so prior to council's vote on that particular item. Uh, members of the public are asked to please state their name and address. For the record, public comment will be limited to three minutes per individual and we ask that you utilize the raise hand feature in Zoom to be recognized. Uh, I see Dr. Promater first. Your three minutes begins now.
Thanks. Um, Dawn Promater, eighteen West College Avenue. Um, just two quick things. Um, I have been trying to attend the HARB meetings for the past two months. So I've written to the borough manager, um, asking for a link. The links are never posted on the calendar where, um, the meeting is announced. Um, so I was hoping we could rectify that. It is a public meeting. Um, the other thing I was just curious about is you have an executive session listed at the end of this meeting. It just says legal. Um, can you be more specific what that executive session is about?
Um, generally, I believe legal is, is what we're required to disclose. I'll defer to our solicitor.
Yeah, that's about, about all we can disclose at this time. It's a, a matter of litigation.
The borough being sued again?
I'm not going to comment any further on it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, do we see any further public comment this evening? Going once, going twice, seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of the meeting. Our next item is consideration of tonight's consent agenda. Uh, there are four items in tonight's consent agenda. They are approval of the minutes for members' December fifteenth meeting, approval of the bills list stated today, January fifth, approval of a certificate of appropriateness, number twenty dash twenty-two at forty-seven West Afton Avenue. And the fourth item is for the reappointments to borough boards and commissions. Um, there is a list of those in the borough packet provided to the council members. Would any member of council like one of these items to be considered separately from the others?
I don't want, uh, not asking for it to be considered separately, but I would like to just give a little bit of, uh, information on one of the items. Would you like that now or after?
Uh, is it the appointments?
Yeah.
Um, sure, we can do that now.
So just wanted to mention that, uh, for the reappointments, uh, essentially, these, all, these, these have all been when, when, uh, anyone who was already serving, applied for reappointment, uh, they've been recommended to be reappointed. Uh, there is only one position where there is competition from a new person for that position. Uh, but in that situation, we generally reappoint unless there's some problem, like the person doesn't attend or some other issue going on. So we recommend it in that case to reappoint. Uh, and if anyone wants to discuss any of that further, we, you know, we can do that. Otherwise, you all have the, uh, document, so it's all there. Thanks.
So, um, I see, is there a motion for cons, uh, approval of the consent agenda?
So moved. Sorry.
Motion made by, uh, Mr. McCann, seconded by Ms. Thompson, uh, for approval of the consent agenda, and I am, uh, it's going to be slightly tedious, but I'm just going to read into the record what these reappointments are. Um, so bear with me while I do that. Um, to the zoning hearing board for term ending two thousand twenty-five, Rick Edwards, to the sewer authority, term ending two thousand twenty-five, Carl Corella, to, uh, HARB, term ending two thousand twenty-four, Rita DeMarco, to civil service commission, term ending two thousand twenty-six, Tim McVan, human relations, term ending two thousand twenty-three, Chris Camp alone, parks and recreation, term ending two thousand twenty-three. There are three of these. It's Carol Schultz, Anne Heasley, and Steve Andrews. To the vacancy board, term ending two thousand twenty-one, Brian Welch. Uh, and to the EAC, term ending two thousand twenty-two, Caterina Redchits, and to term ending two thousand twenty-three, Alexander Mahmood. Do we have any comments, discussion from council or the public on the, uh, cons, um, consent agenda? Excuse me. All right, I see none, council. I see one from Dr. Promater. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, yeah, since I was the person who applied for the civil service commission, um, there, there are some things I would just like to say very quickly. Um, I do think I'm very qualified for that position and, um, I know that last time when it opened up, I was not interviewed. Um, and although the explanation that if somebody just wants to do it again, um, they should, they should continue to see, I, I would like to point out that the civil service commission that hires police and promotes police um, is completely comprised of all white men that only hires and promotes all white men for full-time positions. Um, you talk about diversity, social equity, equity and human relations. I've experienced this a lot in the past twenty-five years in law enforcement that women are often discriminated against. And you know, this only having the same people is the very definition of cronyism. And I think I'm very qualified and that, um, when I wasn't interviewed last month for the appointment, that's the, also a definition of discrimination. So, um, this has nothing to do with the person who's in the position, but I think the process really needs to be considered. Um, if you want to have a more diverse department, you have to have more diversity on the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Promater.
I think I, can I just, can I just, um, read something maybe helpful? And I appreciate Dr. Promater, your, your comments. Uh, you certainly do, ha- having interviewed you, I can say you brought strong qualifications to the table. So I guess, um, I just want to read, maybe this would just help shed some light on that. This is what our guideline is as of right now, and of course, if, if council wants to discuss that, you know, I'm open to that. We can discuss it further, but it's that preference will be given to reappointment for sitting board commission members who meet the following criteria, have attended more meetings than they have missed during the term, uh, if board commission regularly meets, have relevant experience, skills to the board commission of interest, have been interviewed by community outreach, uh, if we haven't interviewed them before, for example. Um, so essentially, uh, there is a value in continuum. Uh, but we're not locked into that and I think council can absolutely consider if there is a, a situation where it makes more sense to change the membership, the, the groups and the, you know, qualified people are applying. I, I think that's a case by case thing.
Thank you. Uh, is there further comment? Yeah, Mayor Harding.
Um, so real quick and, and not to speak on Dr. Promater's comments about the, the commission, but just to assure council that, uh, Chief Kelly and I have numerous and have had and will continue to have numerous conversations about proper hiring practices for departments. So I just wanted to assure council of that.
Thank you. Are there any further discussion on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Are there any extensions? Motion carries seven to zero. And Chief Kelly, we will return to you for your regular report.
Thank you, sir. Uh, two items. First one is thanks to both Mayor Harding, uh, Council President Brea, Vice President Thompson, and the entire council for your support of the restructure of the police department. I think it's going to pay dividends going forward. The second item is year-end statistics for two thousand twenty, a, um, record-setting and, and very tumultuous year, to say the least. In this year, we investigated seven thousand one hundred and sixty-six calls for service, which represents uh, the highest we have on record since we've been computerizing our records management system. That wasn't driven by more service calls. That was largely driven by, uh, self, self-productivity money officers. They did sixteen hundred checks higher this year than they did last year of businesses and properties and, uh, outreaches and things like that, um, with the reduction of enforcement. They, being necessary, they were able to do more proactive checks. So that's what drove that number. Parking tickets for the year were twenty-nine, traffic citations were six seventy-eight. Other citations were eleven. We investigated fifty traffic accidents. That is the lowest number, um, we can find also on record. At least for the past, uh, couple of years and we, we even checked back further than that. Uh, we were trending down. We were averaging about a hundred and then we trended down last year, uh, to, we went from one oh nine in seventeen to one oh four in eighteen and we trended down to eighty in two thousand nineteen and now fifty this year. Again, largely attributable to a reduction in traffic mid-year due to the pandemic. All these numbers are down. We had twenty-nine arrests this year. Seven of them were for DUI, so we think we're making some headway there. Last year, we had nineteen arrests for DUI, so we, we absolutely think we're making some headway. And I just want to make a mention on those fifty accidents, forty-six were non-reported. So not only do we a- average less than an accident a week this year, um, we also only had four in which a car needed to be towed. So it was a pretty safe year from a traffic safety perspective this year and that completes my reports, sir.
All right, thank you, Chief Kelly. Any questions from council? All right, hearing none, uh, gonna move on. We don't have engineers report tonight, although I will just pause for a second there. Are there any questions for our borough engineer, uh, just on anything general while we're all here? All right, that is nice and easy. Uh, it means that next up is our manager's report. So over to you, Manager Johnson.
I just wanted to let everybody know that once again this year, our trash hauler will be picking up the Christmas trees, so anybody can put them out on any day, either Wednesdays or Saturdays. Um, we've been submitting our two thousand twenty-one reports to the state and the county, so we have a lot of work doing that. And then also we have begun our two thousand twenty audit, which is going to be done mostly virtual, so there'll be a lot more work on our end submitting that stuff for Kevin Jensen, our auditor. And that's all I have to report tonight.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council for the borough manager? All right, hearing none, uh, over to Mr. Klosser for a solicitor's report.
Uh, thank you, but I don't have any report this evening.
Thank you. Um, Mayor Harding, you're next.
Thank you, Council President. I'm just real quick, wanted again, always thank, uh, Chief Kelly and Manager Johnson, who were the special guests on today's Yardley Borough on-air radio show. They did a fantastic job. You just need to know, I, I know most of you listen, I, but I know times get busy and you, you can't get on the radio. They do an excellent job representing the borough, so I, I truly want to thank them because I sometimes call on them at the last minute and appreciate their assistance. So that's it.
Mayor. All right, moving on now is our council member reports. We'll begin with Mr. Curtin.
Uh, thank you, uh, Chairman. Uh, briefly, just on environmental.
Uh, thank you, uh, Chairman. Uh, briefly, just on Environmental Advisory Commission, um, they met on, um, Wednesday, December seventeenth. It was a combined uh, November, uh, December meeting, just to provide an update on their work analyzing the, uh, stormwater uh, runoff from Bach and Brock Creek into Lake Afton, um, and the related testing that they're doing through a grant. So that work continues. Uh, they were out uh, last Saturday, uh, right after New Year's, uh, collecting additional data, which they are working, uh, to continue that project. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Ross.
Uh, nothing to report.
You, uh, Ms. Segal Mars.
Uh, nothing to report this evening.
All right, thank you. Uh, for myself, I have no updates. The Sewer Authority meets next week. Uh, on to Ms. Thompson.
Yes, I have one item that I'll be handling under the General Government Report, and that is the, um, Borough Manager's Performance Review. So per her, um, current contract, which is a two-year contract that was executed last year, so it doesn't need action at this meeting. However, it stipulates that for annual increases, all increases will be based on performance evaluation, final rating, which will be based on a consensus of Borough Council as follows: two percent meets expectations, three percent exceeds expectations, and four percent for outstanding. So, um, this year, we, um, used a Google forum with forty-three competency areas, um, in the greater um, competency buckets of financial management, people management, project management, communication and relationships, and professional learning, training, and development. So all seven council members rated in forty-three competency subgroups, and those scores were averaged, and they came to four point zero three. So I am asking for a consensus of council to agree on a three percent exceeds expectation performance-related increase for the Borough Manager effective January first.
All right, thank you. Again, that is just consistent with the contract we executed last year. Are there any objections to what was just outlined? Hearing none, all right.
Thank you. I would just, um, without reading from her, from her performance review, would like to highlight the glowing and extensive praise for our Borough Manager through a very difficult year. Um, it's, it's never comfortable to get your, to get a review such as this, but she, uh, provided very honest and open feedback about herself, and all the council members did as well, and she netted out, you know, handling everything in twenty twenty very professionally and competently. So thank you, Manager Johnson.
Thank you, Councilperson Thompson, and thank you, Paula. It's certainly not been an easy year. Um, so thank you for all that you had to do to get us through it. I know it was interesting at times and still is.
Thank you. Thank you all, and I'm happy to be here with all of you.
Uh, moving on, Mr. McCann.
Just wish everyone a Happy New Year, um, on the call, and my fellow council, uh, members, and, um, just want to say the Community Economic Development Committee met today. We invited the new head of the YBA, John Stratford. Um, and we kind of just had a conversation about how we could be more supportive of businesses, especially during these challenging times. Um, we kind of talked a little about the short term and through COVID and even long term, what are those possibilities to support businesses in town? So kind of what we plan to invite, not only experienced Yardley, but also YBA back in the future to kind of brainstorm more of these ideas. But for everyone, certainly, um, even getting something as simple as takeout from the restaurants will help those restaurants, um, through these difficult times, or even shopping locally are important. Um, so we'll continue that dialogue and hopefully, um, can really brainstorm some ways to better support businesses that are an important part of the community and the fabric of our town. So thank you.
Thank you, John. Uh, and last is Mr. Fider.
Two things. Uh, one is I just want to thank, uh, Manager Johnson, uh, as well as Mary Ann for getting the emails out for the all the, uh, committee meetings and the council meeting. It's a new thing happening, and, uh, we have new people here as a result, so it's getting the public more involved, which is, I think, good for all of us, uh, to have more discussion and have people be more involved in what's happening in our little borough. So thank you for that, uh, and we'll work to, uh, you know, keep improving that process. Uh, the second thing is that, uh, it's kind of a follow-up on the reappointments, which is that the Planning Commission is, uh, has currently five members, um, which the ordinance allows for down from seven. Um, and the, this is really a discussion item for council, uh, what you all think of that. Um, and my, and I'll start us off just by saying that, you know, from my perspective, you know, five could actually be better than seven. Um, it's not necessarily negative. Uh, however, I would say we should be open to, it's a really important, that's a, a commission that's really important to have people who are qualified and knowledgeable in that area. So if somebody were to show up that had, that has that knowledge, you know, we could take up adding one and also discuss it with the commission, but just to, what do people think of, uh, being okay with leaving it at five and not rushing to pack it, so to speak?
Any comments?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, or you know my thoughts on this since I'm on the, uh, committee with you, but, um, first, just obviously, um, opening the line of communication with the current planning commission, the five members that remain getting their thoughts, but, um, we do have trouble filling vacancies, and if you scroll through our list of people who serve on committees, there's a lot of overlap, and I think our volunteers are getting burnt out, and we're really seeing that. So, um, we need to give that time to regenerate, and I think the way we do that is bringing down the size of our committees where the ordinances allow, and this is one of those committees where the ordinance does allow it to be a bit smaller.
My, my question, Yuri, was just going to be around the committee. How's the committee feel, right? Does the committee feel like five's the right number? Do they have a view? Because I'd sort of probably defer to that. And and I guess my guess is they would say, unless there's someone that adds a particular area of expertise, they'd probably be comfortable rolling with what they got, right? Which then I'm inclined to to say, let's do that, too.
Great.
And, you know, a quick question. I don't know if you have the ordinance handy. Um, is it a five or seven?
Has to be odd.
Okay, that's what I thought. I know we have some others like that, so it it does put us in the position where we'd have to appoint two, not one.
Right.
Okay.
Or we could have like somebody sort of waiting, and then if someone leaves, that kind of thing would be better than, yeah, and trying to appoint one and then have to find another one and have the same problem. Yeah.
Okay, um, and of course, being that we don't have applicants waiting for this commission, um, we couldn't take action tonight even if we wanted to, which makes it easy for tonight. Um, certainly, if if folks have some, you know, ideas or thoughts about the long-term planning of that, um, you know, we can entertain this. All right, so any other comments from council on that? And I do see one from the public, uh, Susan Taylor. Go ahead.
From my perspective, it would be better to leave the number at seven because when you reduce it to five, that lowers the expectation well into the future. Um, seven's actually a good working number because there are a lot of different aspects of planning and having a variety of people with different expertise and different viewpoints is positive. And, um, from my personal perspective, I wasn't aware that there were openings on the Planning Commission, so it might be something worthwhile to, um, solicit public participation once again. After all, you have to ask at least six times. My two cents, and I might be interested.
Thank you. Uh, are any final comments on this this year? All right, hearing and seeing none, that concludes our regular agenda items this evening. Um, and as we touched on earlier, council will now join into an executive session. There will not be any votes following the executive session. Um, so that will conclude the regular public portion of the meeting. All right, so good night to everyone who joined us, uh, members of council, the mayor, um, our solicitor, hang on, and I think Chief Kelly, if you could just hang for for this portion as well, and, um, Paula, of course. All right, good night, everyone else.
I assume you don't need me.
Oh, no. Sorry, thank you. No, there's no minutes, no minutes.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. All right, I'm just looking to make sure we're down to the group that we should be. I think we are.
Bucky, we should stop recording, correct?
Yes, uh, please.